Greetings and welcome to the September 9th Gathering of the Board. Roll call please.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molnar.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
I'm here.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Five present, two absent.
Member Sykes, will you please lead us as we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Currently, we have no recognitions. At this time, I'll ask, are there any board member community reflections? You go. I'm almost about to say seen none. Okay. Member Hall?
I was trying to tell Molnar to go first, and she didn't want to. But thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, a few things that I attended this week. Well, first of all, I want to say, welcome back to all the students in schools all over. I wish you all a successful year, as well as teachers. Welcome back. I attended an event at North High School with the G R Foundation and United Way. And just think, we thank them for the partnership that they have with us. Without their services, a lot of things would not happen, such as parents being able to do lift rides, or back-to-school events, backpacks, clothing, jobs and family services, and so forth. Just being able to help our community and our students. Also, kindergarten signing at Finley, that was last Monday, no, last Tuesday. That was amazing. Having a signing day with the kids sitting behind the table with their certificate. And parents were all gathered around, taking pictures behind them, and in front as if they were signing an NFL or NBA contract. So, that was pretty awesome. And I also liked the fact that they had jerseys for the kids. They have four kindergarten classrooms. And they had different colored jerseys for the kids that they'll be wearing for the next two weeks, so that they don't lose their way, or someone won't say, like, where are you supposed to be? You have a red jersey on, you should be in that classroom. So, I thought that was really, really smart. So, shout out to the principal and the staff at Finley. Also, Project Grad attended their event this weekend, wonderful event that they put on every year. Supporting our students in millions of dollars of scholarships. People, scholarship money is out here. No one should ever say that they can't find money for their kid to go to college. No one should say, oh, I make too much money to apply for this scholarship. Because when you do that, you're just leaving money on the table for the next kid. So, thank you, Project Grad, and also wanted to just give a shout out to our superintendent. Job well done. You're doing the best that you can. I appreciate you. I support you. And keep on keeping on, okay?
Thank you, Member Hall. Member Molnar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, reflections today. Once again, welcome back to school, everyone. I want to thank especially all of the teachers and other staff members who have become traffic engineers this week. The first few weeks of school are always the hardest to get through everywhere, but I'm seeing so many brave individuals with signs navigating traffic. And so, thank you. I did just find out that our enrollment numbers, if it seems like there are more people, there are. So, very exciting news. Our enrollment numbers are higher than anticipated. We're at over 20,000 students, which is an amazing goal and a great celebration for our district. And so, as we head into our iReady testing this week, let's just hope that all 20,000 of those students get a good night's rest before each of their tests, as we learned in our last instructional policy meeting. Those scores matter to our district and for our report cards. I actually, for my student, I, it was sent home, the reports from the Ohio State tests also. And so, these weren't mentioned in the instructional policy meeting. But at least here, it looks like our district average score for at least one of these tests was above the state average, which is also something I think is worth celebrating. I would like to hear more about these types of things in the Instructional Policy Committee. As a board member, I would not have known about this. I only knew about this as a parent. And then, but not for both tests. It was one of the pages, not the other page. But there's still a lot we can do, work we can do to improve. And also, I read a lot of articles about our district recently. And one of them that really stood out to me was written by someone behind us about the new Robinson Elementary, or Middle School, the new, the move, the high school, sorry. The STEM High School. And what really stuck out to me in that article was talking about how much the kids loved the playground. I was not expecting to hear the kids want the playground. Apparently, they even signed a letter for the playground. And so, that had me digging and listening to other people say, yes, the kids love the playgrounds. And things that we might not think are important academically, but science proves that it is. Play is important. Rest is important. And apparently, NSBA, which is a conference that some of us have been to and are considering going to again, they actually have a policy about recess. And so, I don't know if our district has a policy on recess, or what our procedure is. But that's something that I would like to learn more about. If someone could send me what we have so far about recess, and so we can connect that to our academics. I'd really appreciate it and start off a good school year. Thank you.
We could send you the recess policy from Central Office that we use, twice a day, 11:00 and 1:15.
Is there a playground here, too?
Thank you, Member Molnar. And just for a point of clarification, at the Instructional Policy Meeting, Dr. Kaver did an excellent job talking about our test scores and also the improvement of the state test scores, as well, which are the scores that you are referencing. And she did go over those. So, it was available for the community, as well as board members. And it was very detailed. So, excellent job to all those who were in attendance. And even speaking how we made double-digit gains in specific area, which is amazing. So, Dr. Kaver, excuse me, and team, thank you so much. I definitely didn't want to, I would be remiss not to make that statement. So, the information has been made available. Thank you. Now, moving on, we have our requests to address the board. We have four requests to address the board. And before we move into those requests, I need you all to listen, and please listen very clearly on the rules and regulations, as if any of the rules are violated, the mic would be silenced, and that would end your time. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Please state your name, as well as your group affiliation. The first name that we have is community member, citizen Carla Chapman.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, and community. I am here on behalf of the Citizen Committee for the Akron Public School, and I wanted to share an update with you. Today, at 1:00 PM, we kicked off our Issue 27 levy campaign, Issue 27. And this was a virtual launch, which included a press release with a couple of partner statements, including the LeBron James Family Foundation and Suma Health, who spoke about the importance of this levy and the importance of supporting it on behalf of our children. So, for me, this is the single most important thing that we can do right now. For me, this is the single most important thing that we can do. And so, we also sent an email out to our leaders and organizations throughout the city. Social media posts were shared, and there's an outreach committee right now, posting and sharing. Robocalls were made to our citizens throughout the city, and these were all a part of the things included in our virtual kick-off. So, here we are, 57 days until November 5th. We will be busy. We will be working hard during this time, reaching our voters and our residents at every community event we can possibly attend, every program, as much as possible. There is no rest right now. There is no rest. We'll be encouraging voters every day during the early voting season. We will be there, encouraging our voters to support us. We'll be walking and talking and delivering yard signs for the next 57 days. And so, we are off and running. We hope that you will join us in this effort. If you need more information, you can visit our website at akronschoollevy.com. You can share information about wanting to volunteer, to donate, and then lastly, we would just say, vote yes on Issue 27.
Thank you so much, Citizen Carla. Next, we will have Mr. Robert Lyons, Senior. Thank you. Did I pronounce your name right, sir?
Yes.
Lyons, okay, great.
I want to follow up on Ms. Chapman. I got my letter asking for a donation to the Citizens Committee for Akron Public Schools. They're asking for $15,000, $10,000, $5,000, or $2,500. I don't have that. But also, in the letter, they're also stating that it's roughly $26 per 100,000 per month. And the average selling price here is about $300,000 for a house. So, I'm just kind of doing the math. That's what, about an extra thousand a year, give or take? That's a lot. North High School is included in that. So, when is the right time to do it? North High School should have been rebuilt. Robinson Elementary School, that's now a high school, wouldn't be there if it hadn't been for my brother and my daughter, my sister-in-law, at a federal lawsuit that kept Robinson open, so that you guys could actually turn into a high school now. And displace a bunch of inner-city kids that has to go to schools that they didn't really want to go to. And then, you had to do open enrollment to do it. So, do your history a little bit when you start going around millions of dollars. That's all I got to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Your comments are greatly appreciated. Next, we have Ms. Brandy Vickers.
Today, I am urging the board to implement some type of system for independent contractors. I don't believe that it's fair that if you're a contractor and you voice concerns with the appropriate people, and yet, there's still no resolve that issue in there. There has to be some type of follow-up to make sure that the issues that you guys have voted on is actually what's happening, even if it's just follow-up questions. Like, for example, ensuring that when you say a specific group is to be used as primary and others as secondary, that that's actually what happens.
Ms. Vickers, yeah, so these are matters of employment, which is what is not supposed to be discussed at this level when you're using...
It's really broad, though.
Well, not so, because you're making specific comments about when you're using vendors.
Okay, so am I allowed to speak on your resolutions? That's on your agenda for today?
Well, as long as it's, what you can't speak on is matters of employment. But, so go ahead and speak, and then I'll let you know, because you can't speak about anything dealing with employment, vendors, things talked about with the understanding of vendors.
So, I would just urge the board to look at Resolution 27.9. That was something that I think back in prior board meetings was kind of already discussed with you all, and how measures should be handled. And I'm not sure that they would be. According to the meetings that I've watched or attended prior, versus what I see on your agenda today, doesn't seem like the directives that you ordered is necessarily what is being followed. And I guess overall, is what I'm basically here to question is, what the board, your power, if you have the last final say-so, and then it's still not being followed, is that something that the board should not be concerned about what's going on? I do believe that there are certain things that should still be addressed. And again, I don't really know the proper way to say it, other than to say, if I'm not allowed to speak here, I've requested executive sessions, I'm not allowed to have those. If I've spoke with administration and being told that they're going to get back with me, but they're not, then what do I do, or what do we do as a group?
Excellent. That, how you just posed your question here, because that didn't deal with employment. That was very clear about follow-up, the lack thereof, for whatever the issue was. So, I think the way you stated it there is how you would state that. And then, the board, being here, being under the hearing of this information, I think follow-up can happen after that, because you didn't say anything specific about it.
Okay, well, I would definitely ask the board to please do as much follow-up as possible about directives that you guys has issued, and make sure that that's exactly what's being followed, because I don't believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Vickers. Your comments are appreciated. Next, we have Mr., I'm sorry, Pastor Harrison.
Good evening, Board. I had a prepared statement, but I have to change it, I guess, now. I'm here to ask the board if they would ask for the resignation of Deborah Folk and the Transportation Supervisor.
Pastor Harrison, we can't, you mentioned, we can't state people's names, as you just stated.
That's your policy. That's not state law. So, state law says, I got three minutes to address this board about issues concerning taxpayers' money. That's what state law says, and that's what I intend to do.
And the state law also gives, that's why we form policy.
No, policy cannot supersede state law, okay? Not when it comes to First Amendment issues. So, I've attended board meetings, but first, let me state that I have been to an executive session for this. So, I have followed the policy, and I did not get a response in actions. There is a number of things that have happened. There's a number of discrepancies that continue to happen. And we continue to ask this board, the superintendent, to take action. And it goes beyond this superintendent. We are going back, I know for me, 14 years. Black, brown, and poor kids are being neglected. And why? We continue to hear these contracts, these contracts, federal law says, state law says, our policy says. The van driver's issue is a perfect example of what is happening when you start dissecting things. And there is no real basis for it. What happened to them is retaliation. $3 million was given, a contract to two vendors, without a bid. Who does that? $3 million? And so, when we're talking about $3 million, and the van driver said, hey, wait a minute, what about us? And now, we start retaliating against them. They make less money now than they did before? Because of rules, not laws, rules. And when we start taking those rules apart, they're not based in anything. So, I think at this point, if the board has directed some action to be taken, and that action has not been taken, then the board needs to take action that the action wasn't taken. Putting a policy or a system in place to retaliate against vendors is wrong. And that same type of behavior is what we could be telling about closing schools. Are we done with this? This is five months into this one transportation issue. There's kids that need to be bused. There's black kids that are being suspended 6 to 1. Can we address some of that stuff? Can we leave this transportation stuff alone? If the people who are hired to do it can't do it, we need someone else to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Harrison. Now, to my colleague Sykes, this is when we need legal here, because I have a point of inquiry, and I don't know who would be here to answer, because I just, Ms. Vickers just sat down, and everything that Ms. Vickers was instructed, I want to do this for clarity, for the record, and everything that Ms. Vickers was instructed to do, because I'm a policy person, that's what I follow. Mr. Harrison, just, sorry, Pastor Harrison, just informed and that I understand that our policies don't supersede state law, then now, it's a whole thing about redirecting our policy, the point of policy, because then Ms. Vickers should have been allowed, and my apologies to you, Ms. Vickers. And so, because you should have been allowed to speak, if in fact, that was the case. And so, and like I said, for, but I just want that to be clear now. And even though it's a board policy, it is our, it's our policy here. But as I'm understanding this, Pastor Harrison, I'm not attorney, and I'm not going to belabor this meeting or this, but I do want to give my public apology to Ms. Vickers, because she was not able to state the same things that Mr. Harrison spoke, individual names, as well as issues concerning vendors. And even though we clearly state that this, can you reclaim the time? Y'all, people shaking their head, no, but is it any point of, because I don't want to do anything out of order. And so, the thing is, for clarification's sake, and Member Sykes said this months ago, and now here... And so the thing is, for clarification's sake, and remember, Sykes said this months ago, and now here we are, that we should have someone advising us.
Ms. Jackson, I would... You can go ahead and put this on me. I would tell you that the state law gives latitude to school boards to make policy. And as long as that policy doesn't violate state law, you're good to go. Every school district I've ever been in does not permit people to come to the podium and specifically call people out. So I don't, I do, you know, I respectfully disagree with Pastor Harrison's assessment of the law. I'm not an attorney, but I stand on what I believe to be what is accurate and right, which is it is what your actions to stop the use of people's specific names is inappropriate. She wasn't stopped from saying anything that policy did not permit her to say. So my recommendation is no, that we move on with this meeting.
Mr. Treasurer, thank you for your recommendation. These are sometimes when you have to make the decisions. Ms. Vickers, I'm going to use a point of privilege and allow you to come and speak.
Understood.
And I do thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you. So like I said, I'm urging the board to implement some type of system for independent contractors because there has to be some type of follow-up. Ensuring that you guys, what you guys say to specific groups being primary and others as secondary, that's what actually needs to actually happen, but it's not. Things such as rates that are approved by the actual board or what you guys thought you were approving is not necessarily the rates that contractors actually see in contracts. Administrative fees being assessed to contractors should not only be outlined to the board, but they should also be outlined in the contract for contractors, which it is not. Rules that don't apply to independent contractors, such as dress codes, that those are for employees. And we're being told that, well, sorry, take that back. A fair amount of time to review contracts and not giving a contract within 48 hours and forced to sign. You should be able to view a contract, have a timely amount of time to have a lawyer or someone look over it to make sure that you agree to it, that was not afforded. Recommendations being quoted as laws that have direct effect on contracts, that should also be something that's listed to the board so that you guys know ahead of time what exactly is going to take place. I'd also like you guys to question, how is it beneficial to hire a company that's still actively recruiting the very people that administration said could not do the job? You know, contractually, it would be a conflict, and it should also be considered double-dipping from APS because APS is paying both sources. Follow-up is also necessary because, like Pastor Harrison said, sometimes when people speak up, it doesn't fare well with everyone. And then retaliatory actions are being taken. Communication is blocked, that is vital to safety and security of our students. It's being jeopardized. Again, recommendations that are not laws are being prevented, are being, preventing us from being as efficient as possible to do our jobs. But more importantly, I think that when the board has voted and gave a direct order and it's not followed, that that's something that should be addressed immediately. We don't want any special treatment. We simply want to be fair and equal treatment, especially when we have proved ourselves to APS for over 53 years with reliability and loyalty, not only to our students, but as well to this administration. So again, like I said, Resolution 27.9, it's questionable. It's on your agenda for suburban to do some form of transportation, but yet the contractors were never asked to do this transportation. And again, I thought this board voted for all ICOs to be primary and the other companies to be supplemental. And that's not happening. So please address it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers. We will now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson, board members. We have, unfortunately, one of our employees that passed away transitioned. Ms. Tracy Harvey, who started with Akron Public Schools in the spring of 2024 as a temporary child nutrition worker. Even in her short time with us, she showed her dedication to APS. The nutrition staff said that Ms. Harvey was excited about the work, and we were excited to have her. And so Akron Public Schools, we can extend to her family, to the family of Ms. Tracy Harvey, our condolences. She will be terribly missed, and we want her to rest in peace. We have some national days that are coming up this month. National Grandparents' Day, September 8th. National Online Learning Day, September 15th. IT Professionals on the 17th of September. Human Resources Professional Day, September the 26th. And National Teaching Assistance Day, which is September the 27th. That would be our pair of professionals. We do have some good news. We have exhausted the recall from our RIF list. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Julian Foster. Thank you. For really, really, really working diligently to help us with the substitute list. So thank you to Mr. Foster. He is in human capital. I was looking for my paper. But just to say thank you to him for assisting us in that matter. On the board agenda and with your approval, there is a grant for fresh fruits and vegetables from the Ohio Department of Education and workforce that will provide fruits and vegetables to our elementary school students, and that will be at no cost to our students. The cornerstone meetings, which are on the website right now, and board members, you will receive, if you haven't already received, the actual dates. But just for our general public, cornerstone number one, which is Culture of Safety and Belonging, and cornerstone four, Family Partners, Partnerships and Community Engagement, will be on Tuesday, the 24th, at 3:30 and again at 5 o'clock. And this information is on the website, but just reading the information for those that, who may be listening or listen to this later in room 207. Again, that's cornerstones one and four on September the 24th. You can attend at 3:30, and you can also attend at 5 o'clock. Cornerstone two, Academic Achievement, will be on the 25th at 4 o'clock and again at 5 o'clock in room 201. And cornerstone three, Operational Excellence, will be on the 26th at 3:30 and again at 5 o'clock, which this will be virtual, so you won't have to worry about coming down to... And the link will also be on the website. Just want to say thank you to Dr. Nguyen for getting us started again with our superintendent book club of the month. And Acme, thank you, thank you, thank you for sponsoring it once again this year. And they're actually going to go to an even higher level with partnering with us on this. And I'm so grateful that our scholars can be rewarded for the great work that they're doing and reading. The North High School FRC Partnership Recognition was on Tuesday, August 27th. Thank you to G A R and also United Way for helping to support us in this endeavor and looking to hopefully get more of these family resource centers. That's what we call the FRC in our schools. Had the opportunity on the first day of school to visit Schumacher, Kraus, East, Litchfield, and also Firestone within the first week of school. And it is good to have our scholars back. On Sunday, September the 1st, had the opportunity to attend the Festival and Parade, Akron Festival and Parade, which was sponsored by our city and downtown. And it was really an exciting event to be a part of. Thank you to our Bookdole Middle School cheerleaders, our East Middle... East and Bookdole, we say middle, but we do not have an Eastern Middle and a Bookdole Middle. We have East and High School and Bookdole High. So, no, it's one school. Yes. So I want to make sure I educate our community correctly. But, and also the higher football team, Ennis Cheerleaders, Litchfield Football Team and North Cheerleaders and the football team. On Monday, the 2nd, East High School, the cheerleaders participated in the East Akron Parade, which I had the opportunity to witness for the first time. And it was really an awesome event, and look forward to attending it next year. September the 5th, had an opportunity to witness the State of the University address by President Niemer, who I've had the opportunity to get to know. And we will definitely be doing some partnerships with Akron, University of Akron, and I'm looking forward to that work that's going to happen. We had our first faith-based advisory group, which we will be changing the date and time of some of those. So those will be posted for those that need to attend. The House of the Lord Founder's Day Luncheon, had an opportunity to go to House 330. They had good food, and I was also hungry, so I left nothing on the plate. But just wanted to say honoring Bishop Johnson and thanking him because he does partner with us, and I'm able to reach out to him, so I appreciate that. Ms. Jacqueline Silas Butler, Project Grad, thank you, thank you, thank you. What a fabulous, fabulous, fabulous event it was. They were achieving the dream. This money, if you can still probably donate, goes to help Akron City School Scholars, and they get scholarships. And so thank you for that. On Sunday, one of our scholars, Zaya West, who is part of our Scholar Advisory Committee, and also Mr. Bryce Harris, who is one of our counselors here in APS. They put on an event that was held at Firestone, Limitless Dreams Event. And let me tell you something. It just brought tears to my eyes to sit and watch the little portion that I was able to see. Our kids getting opportunities to play ball, but also they had opportunities to win gift cards. And it was, it was a fabulous event. And so Zaya plans to graduate. She wants to go into perhaps teaching, and she wants to one day open her own school for students that have autism. And I watched her in action. And if I could hire her tomorrow, I would. She is very much ready. And I thank her for that and continuing to work with her. So I wanted to go and support her. Our enrollment numbers are up. Thank you to Dr. Lash. And just the efforts that have been put, even through some of the work that was done supporting her through communications. But her team, we have really been pushing and pushing to increase our enrollment because when the enrollment is down, dollars go. So we are very, very proud, and we're going to continue to keep doing what we're doing. I will also be continuing to knock on doors. Has nothing to do with a levy, but I am knocking on doors just to welcome our community back to Akron Public Schools because I feel that we can educate our scholars better than anybody else can educate them. So our Be Kind 330... And I had all this stuff organized. That's what happened, too many papers. But in Three Kind 330, Ms., the Marilyn Strout Music Alive Program helps the music alive in our public schools by collecting, repairing, and donating musical instruments to students in Akron, Athens, Struthers School Systems. The program is named after an APS educator and advocate, Marilyn Strout. Last year, 600 instruments were donated to be repaired and many reused throughout our district. What a generous act of kindness from the Summit Radio Station. And on a side note, if anyone is listening and has gently used musical instruments in your attic or your closet or basement, please consider donating those to students who'd love the chance to play it. And you may contact the Summit Radio Station for more information, which is a part of the APS School District. Also, board members, you will see that there is a recommendation for a position. And I just want to share that information with you. You will see, so Ms. Jackson, Dr. Jackson. We are going to continue to do, which this process doesn't happen in one year, but we're going to continue to do restructuring, reorganizing our district. And so there will be a chief counsel position that we will be bringing before the board. I'm going to be reorganizing some things, which is very much needed because the chief counsel would have been sitting here tonight with you. Also, there is an executive director for Strategic Communications, Media, and Community Relations and Outreach, which is something that is extremely needed to support the work here in APS, to work with our media, local and abroad, but also to work with our council department, our legal department, in representing this district in a way that we need to be represented. And so I just wanted to share that information with you as well. Thank you so much, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we'll have the treasurer's report or update.
Just quickly, we've touched upon it, excuse me, a couple of times already, but the five-year forecast was predicated on continual student declining of enrollment by 1% each year. So now that we see an increase, certainly hope that remains sustainable, and we continue to grow or even just hold at the numbers that we're at, which is over 20,000 students. That manifests itself into somewhere approximately $3.2 million in additional funding. So that's really good news for us. Doesn't solve all of our financial problems, but it certainly is beneficial. So having students see the value, families see the value in what we provide here at Akron Public Schools is really important. So getting that message out is also equally important. So I just wanted to give you an update on how that, what enrollment, how that translates into dollars. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Now, we will have the...
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Members, Sykes, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Mr. Treasurer, while I can appreciate that being your report, I just think that it was not extensive enough to give for a monthly report. So I would hope at our next board meeting before the end of this month that we give, get a more extensive finance report from you as a treasurer.
Sure. So at the, on the second board meeting of each month... So at the, on the second board meeting of each month is when I do the financial report. I don't have the, I don't have that information until after the 15th. So, so that is when you'll get the detailed report is always on the second one, which you'll get into specifics on financials.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, for making that clear for me and the public because it is important that we get an extensive finance report on the condition of this district each month. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sykes and Mr. Treasurer. Next, we will have the President's Report. I'll be reading in the absence of our President, Diana Autry, and we are praying for her speedy recovery as she is under the weather. The President Reports established for today reads as follows, "Is the responsibility," well, it's a statement, "It is the responsibility of this seven-member Board to hire, manage, and evaluate the Superintendent. While staff and community input is certainly considered, the Board ultimately and solely reserves this right and continues to stand by Dr. Robertson. We didn't hire him to be best friends with anyone, but to lead, transform, and elevate APS to the next level. His work as a consultant, paid or not, was not the basis of his hiring, nor did it override his past and current work. We understand that his righteous work for our children is not easy and it is why he has a five-year contract to demonstrate his leadership. In one year, he has produced a strategic plan, made academic gains, brought forth reading initiatives, expanded to full-day pre-K, celebrated educators and staff, and tackled redistricting, excuse me, and facilities. There is also the unseen, ongoing work of addressing longstanding systematic challenges such as the culture of fear, bullying, and inequity that preceded him and so outlined in the transition report. His recent evaluation shows the Board is supportive of the direction of the district and found no deviations from the standards of a Superintendent, nor do we find any egregious acts of conduct. We don't condone the recent bullying, personal attacks, criminalization tactics, and the unfair press coverage meant to discredit our academic leader and in turn harm the district. The community is weary of negative, divisive, unproductive behavior and climates. Our children deserve better and we will keep moving forward and building on our successes. Sincerely signed, Board President Diana Autry." Next, are there any committee reports? We'll start with the legal contracts.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Legal Committee, our next meeting is September 16th at 5:30. Previous Legal Committee meetings, we met on June 17th. And this is relevant because at our June 17th meeting, we discussed Policy 3120.04. That was the employment of substitutes. And we discussed this being a Neola update. And we were told at this meeting that Neola is mandatory and that this was critical attention because of House Bill 33. Then, at our most recent Legal Committee meeting, which was August 19, it was being recommended that we not proceed with the Neola updates. And so, we did not proceed as recommended to us by Administration. But now, on today's agenda, there's Resolution 21-1. I'm guessing for immediate passage today. I asked if there was going to be any information about this because I would really like to know, if we did what Administration was asking us to do, I'd like to know what, what has changed about this resolution. A resolution is not a policy. And so, will there be a policy? What does this mean? For how long? I just have received no information about this other than what is posted here in the agenda, the words in the Agenda for Resolution 21-1. And so, because this started in the Legal Committee but did not go through the Legal Committee, I just kind of wanted to give some history of that in case there is going to be a presentation hopefully later on this resolution for passage today.
Thank you, Member Monar. I think when, when that comes up, you may want to ask for a point of inquiry so you can have more clarification on that and then maybe send it back to committee. But next, we'll have Finance and Capital Management. Is there any report?
Our next meeting is September 16th, which is next Monday at 4:30. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of attendance there and people watching online as well. Was happy to hear about Issue 27 tonight. We'll be certainly discussing more about that. Keep that in everybody's mind. And also, the website, akronschoollevy.com. I was excited to hear about that as well. But next meeting, next Monday at 4:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, we'll have Instructional Policy and Student Achievement.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee met on Tuesday, September 3rd. We had two presentations. One of the presentations was presented by Tiffany Lundie regarding the APS Summer Programming, which was held all over the district. Students were allowed to attend any program in any cluster. The programs with the most participation were Mystery Camp and Saw, Glaze and Amused, High School Bridge Programs, Techie Camp, and Camp Invention. And I just know from firsthand, Camp Invention is really good, especially for the younger kids. Second presentation, presentation was done by Dr. Kaver regarding our preliminary state report card. The final report card is due to come out on September 12th. Both early literacy and the gap closing components are expected to move up a star, which I think, Dr. Kaver, is that three stars?
Three stars for gap closing.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So we moved up the star to three stars, which is amazing. Good job, students. And all other components showed improvement, but held the same star rating as last year, which was two stars. So we are moving ahead and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Next, we will hear, was anyone, Equity?
Yes, you, Hall. Hi. Equity was canceled, so we did not have Equity meeting. Next Equity meeting would be October 14th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Next, we will move forward for the approval of our previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Regular Board Meeting on August 26 of 2024?
I so moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Who's our second?
Second was Joe Perry.
I moved.
Oh, Monar's second.
I just seemed like a tie. I didn't know. Okay, sorry.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing, non-roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Monar.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Next, we'll have our Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. I wish to recommend the approval of the Personnel Recommendations presented in Categories 10 through 21.1. But I'm also going to ask for Ms., Mrs. Atkins to bring some clarification to 21.1, please.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to clarify the question. I think the Neola policy that was referenced, I think, was related to student teachers. This is related to the ability to continue to use non-degreed substitutes. And just for the knowledge of the Board, during the period of COVID, the state did allow temporarily the ability to use non-degreed subs, you know, as needed during that time period. And recently has stated that it's up to the discretion of districts now to be able to utilize them. So this resolution is before the Board. We've been doing it for the past three, four years now, and it's just another renewal of that, to be able to utilize non-degreed subs. And other districts are doing this also in, as needed, so.
You recognize. Thank you. So to clarify, this is to continue to allow non-degree subs to be substitute teachers?
Correct.
And as a resolution, how does that affect our policy?
So this is not related to the Neola policy discussion. It was my understanding that the Neola policy discussion was related to the student teachers that were being brought into, trained to be utilized later on. It is not related to this. This is substitutes that are not necessarily students.
Do we have a substitute policy?
We have, I mean, we have been utilizing subs per our Department of Substitute that follows the, case-by-case basis, as needed on a day-to-day basis. We're there to go. So we do have practice in how we do that regularly. So this was not a matter that was in the Neola Committee, is my understanding. So, what was the question?
So the question is, I think I answered it, but it's, it's whether there's a, how we're utilizing the substitutes? Is that the question or is it a question about the Neola policy?
Is there a substitute policy? And is the resolution due to our substitute policy if we have one?
Right. So our current policy right now deals with hiring people who are degreed. But the state has allowed us to, it started with COVID where we've had previous resolutions in order to hire people who have been non-degreed. And it did start with COVID and the state has extended this through House Bill 33. And so eventually, moving forward, we will look at a policy, but right now, we are asking for the extension of a resolution in order to hire non-degreed individuals in order to support our operations and the needs of our schools as it relates to being able to have proper coverage when teachers are absent. And so, we are asking for the resolution to be approved tonight in order to, which is allowed by the, you know, the state is saying, yes, we understand there's a shortage and we understand that district, districts need this. And so, we are looking to have a resolution in place in order for this to happen for the '24-'25 school year. Last year, it was just, it was written in the resolution for it to be extended and we didn't have to bring it to the Board last year, but we're bringing it this year as it relates to it now being allowed with the state. And it sounds like it's going to be indefinite. And again, like I said, at some point in time, we will bring it forward in policy.
I did want to add that the state does lay out the criteria of what's needed. So it's in House Bill 33 and it should be there in the information you have in front of you as to what the state has laid out as a criteria for the hiring of non-degreed subs.
And I want to add that as a Superintendent, it allows for the Superintendent to actually decide if we want to allow people that are non-degreed. And given the fact that we, they're not going to be in a long-term substitute position, but they would be subbing if it's a day-by-day situation, as long as they meet all of the criteria, they would be eligible to, to do that. Otherwise, you're not going to have anybody in classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Esau, you're recognized by the Chair.
Thank you. So I intend to be, I intend to support this resolution for sure, but I was curious, post-secondary degrees is what we're talking about, right?
That's correct.
How many do we have now that are non-post-secondary holders versus are?
Right now, we have about, I want to say about 57 people who are holding, but I do want you to know that we do have some individuals who are not non-degreed, but are career tech education educators. And so, there may be, like Dr. Robinson said, we are cautious and careful because we know that, just we're going to look at the placement of our substitute teachers so that we are making sure that our students are not impacted. But we do have an individual who is a safety firefighter. And so, there may be special cases as it relates to our career tech education courses where even if they were a hired teacher, they still wouldn't have to have had a four-year degree, if you, if you follow what I'm saying.
I just know there's several non-post-secondary degree holders who substitute for us who are very well qualified otherwise.
Correct.
I'm going to support that for sure. So thank you.
Go ahead.
Member Hall, you're recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've definitely been supporting this as well, but I would also like to see maybe down the future, or in the future, some type of way we can support these substitute teachers without degrees. Because one day eventually, I may not be here, we, other people might be here, might say, oh, no, we want them to have a degree. Well, if they've been subbing for five, 10 years, how do we make them be sustainable to getting a degree in education? You know, like certain scholarships that we can create. I know there was a BECOME Scholarship years ago and it kind of just disappeared. Where is that scholarship? To help people be teachers? Huh? It's still there? Okay. So, go ahead.
Yes, and also, we had something that came out as part of, from our Congressional issue, from Congresswoman Amelia Sykes' office a few months ago, and I inquired about that, I think on the floor and even in the meeting, where it was an email went out that was urging and talking about trying to solicit individuals to come into, I'm sorry, for lack of a better word, but it was in trying to engage individuals to come into the teaching profession because there has been such a shortage. So we do have people that's in positions, graduates from our institution that are promoting programming and trying to put money back to help to put people, like you said, in those said programs. So those things are available. I just, since I knew that, I just wanted to add that.
No, thank you, but we also have to get that message out. Like you're saying that the BECOME program is still here, but I've been asking about it for years and nobody knows what's going on. So we got to tell people what's available to them to help them move to the next level. Thank you.
Yeah, and so, for those, now, my question about this is, and this is going to be a follow-up because I don't want to belabor it, but I'm curious because these subs get in the buildings and some that may be non-degreed. And, you know, every school building has a different type of school culture and a climate. And I'm wondering what is the, how much can a building leader and other teachers weigh in on a sub per building? Like the offerings of that. So I'm curious about that. I know we have to put bodies in places, but the fidelity of it. I think that other professionals in the building, do we have a process to where as if this sub is not a good fit, these are the issues with this sub, that, that teachers or instructional leaders could kind of weigh in? I'm hearing honest retaliatory talk, you know, something that's just the facts that they can send off to where we can manage subs in buildings. Oh, we do? Okay, excellent. Excellent. That's perfect for me, man. I support it as well.
Thank you.
Forgot I'm running me. Thank you so much for that. Member Monar, thank you.
Thank you for all of that information. Is this where we're also discussing other items in that entire section or just 21-1?
Superintendent, Superintendent called, y'all me up to, for 21.1, I believe. But please, I'll recognize you if you have other questions come up at the time. Because you mentioned 21.1, so I believe that's why Superintendent addressed you.
Yes.
Superintendent.
Thank you.
That concludes, okay.
Go ahead.
So there's other question, I think Monar did as well. So before we, I make the motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations, if I'm understanding clearly, there are still questions?
Yes, thank you. During the Superintendent's Report, there is, like 20 minutes ago, there is a mention about new positions being added to our district, new positions. So I think it looks like in 10.9, there's a position. I did ask, and thank you for the response, it looks like 16.2 and 16.4 are longstanding programs, but maybe 16.3 is also a new position or a group of new positions. I'm not sure. It says they're repurposed positions and I don't know what positions were repurposed for this. So I was just wondering, given our careful financial planning as we approach the levy, I would just appreciate if we could share some relevant budget information regarding all of these new positions. When we riffed the 52 teachers, I made note that we were riffing above the 15 million that we had voted on. And I asked if this was to make room for other positions and I was told, no, these were necessary cuts. Every single cut was a necessary cut immediately. And these were people that worked in the And these were people that worked in the classroom, directly with students. And it seems like at least in 10.9 and 16.3, these are not positions that work directly with students, but there's no salary listed. My, somebody once said, where you spend your money is where your priorities are. And my priorities are the classroom, my priorities are the kids in the seats, and what are we spending? Mr. Treasurer, you're our money guy. What's happening there? What is this doing to our budget?
Okay, just one moment, for the point of order, I need to make the motion, then this is more the discussion after we make it, as I understand. So is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
I move to approve.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Member Perry and Member Sykes. Now, to continue with the discussion, she posited the question to you, Mr. Treasurer, if you want to respond, you're recognized.
So my understanding, from the financial perspective in a meeting I had with the superintendent today, is those two executive-level positions, they would total somewhere, probably a shade over $400,000 a year for those positions with all, with all, you know, everything, healthcare, STRS, et cetera, et cetera. Additionally, my understanding is that at least one of those positions would be created, and correct me at any point if I'm wrong here, Dr. Robinson, there's a position that, it is my understanding that would be vacated. So thus mitigating that to some degree on, you vacate a position and recreate one over here, as long as the salaries are close, it's fairly budget-neutral. The other position, my understanding, is that we had budgeted a fair amount of money for communications, and that communication, and there were some additional positions the Board approved for communications that would not, that will, my understanding is will not be filled, and some of the funding that was going to go in that direction is going to be redirected to this position. That is my current understanding, but just on its surface, it's not budgeted for, but there are ways to mitigate it, as I understand it. Did I summarize that correctly?
So I'm not exactly sure of the cost of salaries because we haven't gotten to that point. So I certainly don't want to sit here and say that something is going to cost a certain amount because we do not know that yet. But what I am going to say is that these positions are, for example, in communications, yes, they're, instead of us doing what we initially said we would do, I'm choosing not to do, not to bring on those positions because we, what we need is more important than, primary need is more important than a secondary need. And so as a superintendent, Dr. Monar, I'm very conscientious of the budget. I'm very careful with the budget because I do the budget. The treasurer ensures that we are balanced and that we continue to not overspend, and that is something I'm going to be very careful about, making sure that we are not overspending, making sure that we are meeting the needs of this district. But I would never bring positions to a board unless it is something that I know that we desperately need, and a chief counsel we desperately need. Having someone that is able to handle our community and public relations is something we desperately need. We need to make sure that we are able to address how we're painted in the media. We need to be sure that we can defend ourselves in the media. That is not something that I, as a superintendent, will be able to continue to keep doing. We spend numerous hours, and I'm taking people away from their jobs, to be able to do this when, if this person is here, that's something that they can do. They will also, because it's not a matter of just writing an article, there are times when we have to sit down and actually work with legal, which consumes hours upon hours of our time. So it's all, it's not so much just about the budget, but when we talk about operational excellence in cornerstone three, we're also talking about how we efficiently and effectively operate this district. And so I'm making sure that we are not spending more than what we're supposed to be, but I also have to make sure that we're able to operate effectively and efficiently. Now, to the public, let me make sure they understand what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, we have countless articles that are written daily. Whether we agree with them or not, we need to be able to defend that appropriately. We're not always able to do that. And we have to make sure that people really understand the facts and the truth, and not someone's interpretation of what they think the situation is within APS. When it comes to the chief counsel position, that's going to be an offset, and so that person is going to be able to do a lot of mitigation, a lot of legal work that we can actually do in-house, that helps support us in-house, that right now, we are not able to do, and we have to solely rely upon external legal. So I am making sure that we are being good stewards, keeping in mind that we do have a levy coming, and how we got to the point of why we need a levy. But at the same time, we still have to function. I have cut this departments down to bare bones, but we still have to be able to function as a district. So I hope that that helps.
It led to me to have actually a follow-up question, but, Member Monar, I do want to respect that you posed the, okay. Because as I was understanding, and for clarification, Member Monar, you were asking strictly about numbers and the salary assigned. Superintendent, I do agree, I understand when you say that the positions are necessary, but I recall, I'm not sure, the exact Board meeting we were in where there was another position that did not have a salary attached, and it may have been Member Monar or another member who mentioned it's hard to vote on something, especially when we're going before the community for a levy, and we approve positions without knowing what those positions are going to cost.
Right.
As fiduciary agents, all seven of us of the district, and we understand, we employ the superintendent and the treasurer to manage these things, but we still have a responsibility, and I think where the questioning is coming from. So not that the positions may not be needed, because you eloquently made that argument, but now, as I understand, Member Monar's question, which is mine too, what is the cost of those positions, and then people can feel better informed to approve them, is what I believe.
So when we bring positions, we're bringing a job description. We're not bringing you hiring someone, because we don't know based on their experience, there's a range. So I can't tell you exactly how much someone would actually make.
So we're approving the, excuse me, we're approving the language for job description only, is this what you're saying?
Yes.
We're just approving the job description, not the job?
Yes. Because we have a set salary schedule, and positions have to fit on that salary schedule. So this is just for us to be able to approve a job description. And based on that salary schedule, as you interview people, then based on that, we are able to determine, and then we bring that to the Board at that point in time, and the Board can accept or reject that at that time.
Okay, and this is where we get clarification, because our treasurer was up here, and, you know, they say in church like he grabbing for butterflies to try to explain where the money was coming from, because without having the facts of what, this may collapse, and we may be able to use this, and then we might be able to use this. It is at that time when we'll know that we're not using those, those certain communication positions, they become obsolete. Now, that can happen in isolation from the Board, like to make those positions obsolete that the Board voted to have?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so then that will make, then that will be added to that salary. So once, it seemed like a lot of work that needed to be done, but, Member Monar, I want to recognize you, and then Mr. Perry, you'll be recognized as well, Member Monar.
Thank you. I am very uncomfortable with this happening here. Most Boards would have this type of conversation in executive session or somewhere else, because this is the type of conversation that we can have and plan in advance. How much money will this person get paid? What does this position do? This is one of the things that we're allowed to go into executive session to talk about, creating new positions and how those new positions fit into the ecosystem that is Akron Public Schools. Now, with that being said, chief counsel, I believe, is not on this agenda. So to simplify and reduce variables from this conversation, that is not one of the things here, so we should not keep bringing it up because it confuses the situation to bring up things that are not here. So, in the rest of the responses, we heard it could cost up to $400,000, but we're not even sure yet. These are, this is what I heard. There's a salary schedule, but I don't see what that salary schedule is. I don't see where that goes into the budget. And the last time that the Board approved a position without knowing the salary, that salary was then, I think there are three or four people that are in that position now, so that salary also was multiplied by number of people. And that, because now it has been months, and that has gone through. And so when I'm asking, how is this going to affect our budget? I want to see what this actually does in cold, hard numbers before I vote on it, and I don't want to have to decide in 20 minutes. And that, this is not a conversation that's typically at the voting meeting. We've usually heard, most Boards have heard anything about this before this minute. So please, again, tell me, with the budget that we have, whoever's doing it, I thought the treasurer did the budget, apparently the superintendent does the budget.
I do.
With the budget, with the forecast, were these positions in the budget before? Question one. Were these positions in the budget that we approved in our monthly thing two weeks ago? And if they were not in that budget, then what does that do to our budget in numbers, please?
So that's where we operationally deal with this, because to your point, Boards would not be having this discussion, because this is a discussion that we have on the operational side of things. So what we do is bring you, the Board, the position and the salary, and the Board determines if it wants to accept or reject that recommendation from the superintendent. But the Board doesn't get involved in how much somebody gets paid or whatever, because that's based on the range that's already approved for the salary schedule, and that's what we follow. So to that point, and then when it talks about the five-year forecast, that's the discussion that we would be having behind the scenes to discuss how does this impact the five-year forecast, but more importantly, how does it impact our budget? And which we're still in the budget season and the process. So this would be a part of that budget. You approve the first part, and then there's a second part, which is the final part of the budget that will be approved.
I'll see, I'm good.
Okay.
Member Hall? Just for, thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarity on 18.2, where it says APS benefits through, and it has dash, dash, I think page 20, what does the dashes mean? 18.2, leave of absence? Okay. Are we able to put to be determined in there, or we just put, because that's what I was thinking, like continuing or whatever, but sometimes we have dates and things like that, but this was just like two dots. So I wasn't sure if it was ongoing, which I thought, or it was just a misprint. You see what I'm talking about?
I absolutely see what you're talking about.
I see what you mean.
Okay. So are we able to put to be determined?
I don't want to talk about a person.
No, I don't, no, I'm not trying to talk about a person, but before, you know, I vote on it, I wanted to know what that meant. And also, I'm asking, going forward, can we put that in writing to be determined? Or something like that versus just dots, because you don't know what you're voting on?
It often, yeah, it often depends, it often depends on a specific situation when we have an extended lead, and so that's why there is no, you know, that's not determined at this moment.
So is that normal practice, just put in the dots there?
No, I agree that we could put in TDP if that's, if that's.
Okay, just something, yeah.
But that's because it's not, I'm no.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. This time, we'll, before it is, there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
We already did that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did the discussion, okay. So now we have to call, approve, roll call. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I take that back.
Okay.
I have to abstain from 10.5, 16.4, and then yes to everything else.
Got it. It wasn't on the agenda. Ms. Jackson.
No on 10.9, yes on the balance.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
No on 10.9 and 16.3, yes on the balance.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda and approval of the resolutions and motions in that agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, you're recognized, Member Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask.
I need a point of order, I need a chance to look at these numbers to make sure that I'm reporting accurately for the record with, how this comes out. So since we have five members, and we have two no votes for 10.9, 10.9 is a no. It requires four votes at a minimum in a Board of seven. So 10.9 is a no. Then 16, then 16.4 and 16.3, both are 4-0 with an abstention in each one of those. And then for the balance, less 10, less 10.9 is, passes 5-0. Yes, sir.
Wasn't there a no on 16.3? I thought, you said 4-0 with an abstention.
Oh, yes, yes, that's correct.
Correct. A no on 16.3 does not deal directly with students.
Yeah, and no on, and 16.3 is a 4-1, but it passes. 10.9 fails 3-2. The rest pass with two abstentions. Sorry.
No problem. Uh, Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, I would like to know, those items that you are including in the consent agenda, does that include 21.25.1? I believe that that does, so I would ask that that be removed from consent agenda for discussion, please.
25.1.
Yes, that would be the resolution authorizing contract with parents for transporting their children to and from school with 24, 25 years.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Member Sykes, excuse me.
Ready whenever you are.
And now we're moving forward, as I said, with the consent agenda, with the removal of 25.1 from the agenda. Is there a motion with the amendment of the removal of 25.1 to approve the consent agenda?
Question, Madam Chair. Would...
Would 22.1 and 25.1 be the same thing?
22.1 and then authorizing.
22.1 is one thing, and then 25.1 is a resolution.
25 is the resolution for 22.1.
Right.
Yeah. It's the same item, but one is a resolution.
One is, so both will be removed. So, I need to state both. Thank you, uh, Member Hall, for recognizing that. So, again, this is a, a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 22.1 as well as 22, 25.1, which is the resolution to authorizing contracts with parents for transporting their children to and from school for the 24, 25 school year. And with the contracts with parents, 22.1 is contract with parents for transporting their children to and from school. Is there a motion?
I move to approve with those two removals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Okay, so for point of clarification, was all we're voting on right now is to remove those two items.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
And Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next is our business affairs recommendation, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Robinson. I'm, my apologies, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Now, I guess we'll discuss 20, with comments, uh, Member Sykes.
That's a now and not a then, that's fine.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So, this 22.1 contract with parents for, for transporting their children to and/or from schools, it is just a general question, and I would go back to our speaker earlier that indicated that, uh, this Board did approve that we would look at our independent contractors, and then if they were not available, that we would go to a particular vendor in dealing with transporting our children. So, my question is that, is there something different that is not clear with this? Why is the independent contractors not in a, in a position to transport these particular
Good evening, Board members. This particular Board letter in 22.1 and 25.1 has to do with the impracticality determination of students that attend schools that are outside the school district. This is the state impracticality determination under 3327.02, in which, as an example, a student from a school that is a charter, non-public, private, or community school could be determined to not be serviced by us because we cannot meet one of the six statutes in the, listed in the resolution. We could, do not have an asset such as a physical bus or driver. We cannot meet the criteria on time for arrival or dismissal of the students, especially now, now under House Bill 33, which states we must not be able to, excuse me, drop off a student before 30 minutes of the school day, and we must have the student off asset such as the school property they're assigned to in, within 30 minutes of this dismissal. We also may not, it may be impractical to transport the student due to the expense of the actual transportation. As I said, each one of the students that applies for this through their, the request for transport by the parent to a non-APS location, it is determined that the student's transport is impractical to do under the same standards, whether it is a yellow school bus, a school bus service, an ICO contract, or a contract with a service company. And this has been a longstanding statute within the state of Ohio. Akron Public Schools has been passing these kinds of resolutions back to 2003, when the statute became part of the standard operating procedures. This is the first resolution of this school year for the first listing of students who have been determined to be impractical to transport. We have subsequently, will bring more resolutions to the attention as they go through the approval and determination of a practicality. Now, the other part of this statute also says, and it's not 3327.02, but then there's the ineligibility of a student to be transported. And in that case, the statute has to do with the timing of the request and the timing of actual transport. So, as an example, a family could make a request to have a student taken from their school of enrollment within APS, withdrawn them and taking them to another school that could be outside the county of even Summit County. And then you get into the, what is called the 30-minute rule, which means a timing is done to determine from the actual drop-off point of the school of enrollment to the new location in which they are actually enrolled to. And if the timing can only be done at one time during a school day, during the normal transport in the actual morning hours, that the bus or transport would be done. So, if you went out on a Google map, it may honestly tell you that, oh, you can get from point A to point B, say, in 27 minutes. The actual official timing, when done from the school of A to B, could be 32 minutes. Therefore, the student is not even eligible to transport to that location. Again, this is part of the standard, operating standards that the Ohio Department of Transportation has. These are not declaring locations ineligible, they are declaring individual students impractical to transport. Because we do not have the assets, it's infeasible to provide them at the correct time, as it's, it's listed, it is expensive to do it, it's impractical to take on the cost, maintenance, et cetera. And each one of those items that you can declare a student impractical is listed in the resolution.
Member Sykes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Director. So, you talked generally about this situation, so are there any particulars? What is the impracticality in this situation?
Each individual student, the list would list one of the six. So, as an example, if my name as a student was listed, I may have item 1, 2, 4, and 5. It depends on exactly what is listed, and you will notice at the bottom that the actual list will be attached in the final minutes, it is not attached there, although it was given to the Superintendent's office as, when we set up the resolution.
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Director. So, it is not attached? So, it does not say here what the impracticality may be?
Because that it.
If you want like specific examples of what?
I, I would like my question answered.
Actually, it is not attached, because then you get into individual student names, and we do not include those in the public documentation when it is sent, because we should not list the individual student. That is up to us to notify the individual parent.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Director. Miss, Madam Chair, so, the question is whether or not the independent contractors are able to contract, to transport these children? That's the question.
No. That is, that is not, that is not part of the process. That is, these are impracticalities beyond those current contracts.
Students that independent contractors.
Excuse me, excuse me. Thank you.
The students that the independent contractors are contracted to transport students to APS locations and contracted schools for which we, as a, as an example, the SPED department asks that a student go to. These are students that are not part of APS.
Again, my question remains the same. We passed legislation that would indicate that the independent contractors would be the individuals transporting the students. You're saying it's impracticality.
Yes.
Prevents that. However, you have not provided the documentation to prove that.
The documentation, as I said, lists an individual student, and it is not part of the public document, becomes part of the attachment once the approval is given. It has been given to the Superintendent's office, and it would list each individual item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say that before I can vote on that, I need to see, I need to see that information to determine whether or not, I believe, as a member, voting member of this Board, if it is, is, is indeed an impracticality. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sykes. I'm not in disagreement with that. Also, my question is, in businesses, affairs, and those dealing with transportation, I'm curious, because currently Columbus City Schools are in litigation with something similar to this. And so, I think I need more information as well, and I would also urge the Board to review that information. And just, I only speak as one Board member with one vote, but I would like clarification because I just, to me, if it sounds circular talk, or if I'm unclear, I, I just like to read things and to be clear on what I'm doing. And currently, this is currently, um, there are lawsuits, there is litigation happening currently that sounds very similar to what we are proposing to do. So, if I'm in error of that, then I want clarification. But also, I think I would side with, uh, Member Molnar, she said earlier, I also don't want to be pressed to then make a decision lacking information. Ms. Carter?
Superintendent, whatever, whoever, can?
Thank you. Can I have Ms. Frymire to come? I just want to make one note about this to our Board members on 27, I'm sorry, yeah, We do have, and I'll let Ms. Frymire share more about this, but we do have one or two students where they have to have special equipment on their van. It has to be equipped, so I'll let her share. But this is on this particular item.
So, 27.9 is for Ohio State School for the Blind. That is a campus school in Columbus. Students have to arrive there on Sunday.
Point of order, we're not on that one. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank, thank you, uh, that, that, because that's not the, but I, thank you for the information, because I did read that. Well, but we're dealing with 27, uh, 22.1, and then which was in, about just 25.1, I believe. And then we'll go to the other consent agenda. So, those are specifics.
Uh huh.
It is, but those specific ones that you see, with that we pulled off, we're dealing with the ones that were pulled off the consent agenda only.
Do you see the rationale behind it? It's right there. Okay, so you see it, it's right there.
Member Hall, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to piggyback off of 22.1 and 25.1, I've had community members, residents, voters, who has made issues regarding parents doing their own transportation for their children due to not having enough time to prepare for it, because I think they were told, like two weeks before school started, that APS would not be transporting. And when we talk about impractical and inexpensive, um, to my understanding, Peterman Bus was the only transportation service that some of these schools were receiving. So, if we haven't looked at all of the different outlets far as like ICOs or whomever else, and we've only used Peterman, how do we make a decision to cancel this out altogether?
Uh, thank you, Member Hall. And also think, um, to move this forward, we either gonna decide to like vote this down and bring it back, I think, because it's a lot of questioning, and I don't want to belabor it. No, not, no, Member Hall, but your points are well taken. I want to have, Dr. Thompson has something to add to that, too. Ms. Falk is, is back to the mic, and so Ms. Falk will, I guess, address, I'm gonna have you address, Member Hall, and then you recognize to Dr. Thompson after Ms. Falk, Ms. Falk?
Thank you. This process of looking at school transportation is always started in February of the previous year, and we go through all aspects of transportation, especially following the redistricting that the Board voted to have take place within our own school district on the meeting of March 20th. Once that was completed, it was determined, and we actually reached out to Ms. Sykes' question earlier, all families that had done the RFT process last year and declared impracticality or also got transportation. If we had letters of, uh, information available to them, those letters were sent out at the close of the school year in June to say that this review was underway, and all schools were notified that this review was underway. Normally, the RFT process opens on April 1st. We had a meeting and invited all schools to attend the meeting in March, which is our standard procedure in this process. We had forewarned them at the meeting that this would be an annual review at the time, and we were not sure exactly the effects, but with the increases in requests for transport, there was a possibility that this would be an extensive review, which it was. From that time period all the way through June, then we, as a district, did our rollover and promoted our students and knew exactly where they were attending. We started to receive the RFTs, which we have done, this RFT process has been around since, actually, 1516 is which, is when it started, where the parents filled out the information, and then we, we started to get those in and process those. So, each student is truly looked at individually, which.
Not to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Not to prolong it.
No, no, no.
Just my question basically was, um, from conversations and things forth, Peterman Bus has been kind of like the prime transportation for those schools. So, has any other divisions been looked at, ICOs or whomever else?
This is K-12, or K-8, transportation by yellow bus only. That is what the standard is for transport and the safest.
Is that our standard, or is that the state standard?
No, that's basically what they are eligible for. Normally, van transport, ICOs, are handling home-to-home SPED or McKinney-Vento specific standards to meet the federal guidelines. Standard K-8 is yellow bus, so when we.
That's standard guidelines?
That's our standard use of yellow buses. So, at that point, we could not do anything but yellow bus, so that's what we put into place. And we certainly have effectively put the ICOs and the subsequent transport for McKinney-Vento to the van transport following the Board's approval. And it's still actively being pursued.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Thompson, and then we'll call for the court.
So, I'll try to make this as clear and quickly as I, I can. I think there's a bit of confusion, although Ms. Falk touched on it there at the end very clearly. We're, we're crossing two different groups of kids. So, you have McKinney-Vento homeless and special needs kids, vans. Then you have kids over here who might go to a school by their choice, might go to, I don't know, one, you know, any Catholic, any private school, or any other educational institution, whether it's a charter or what. If that route is declared impractical, then those, but those, we're not talking about special ed kids, we're not talking about kids that van drivers would pick up. These aren't kids that van drivers would pick up. These are just a regular ed kid who does not attend our schools, but lives in our community. And for everyone, just to be, make sure that, because I got confused, and I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page before we vote. And then, secondly, also important, it's not just APS or DevFolk or Transportation deciding it's impractical. The ODE and Department of Transportation have to approve that route as being impractical. So, we don't have the power just to flip. power just to flippantly apply that. We test it, ODE, it can be challenged, there's a whole process for that. They'll send people out, ride with us in a, in a bus to ensure that what we're saying is accurate. So there are checks and balances on this, but these are two very different categories of students. And I hope, I hope that makes it clear. And this is not new, by the way. This has been happening for decades, decades.
Member Sykes?
Madam Chair, thank you. Let me just say that because this has been happening for decades does not mean that there is no reason to question it.
I'm not suggesting that.
Thank you.
All right. And so the discussion's been had, both these items have been moved off of the consent agenda. Member Monarch, you've been recognized. If you have something to add, please.
Thank you. I just have one question. And it's to, it's to cost. To live a year, I'm gonna ask about money a lot. It says it's $583.86 per student is what the, is what it would have been for the contract for parents. Do we know how that would compare to the cost if any of those routes went to another mode of transportation besides this?
An average yellow bus costs $60,000 a year. So as an example, if you had three students from the same location ask for transport to that location, to provide that bus would be $20,000 per student. If you had, you know, 10 students do it, that's what the math was. And we literally sat and did the math on every one of the areas of transport that we do by yellow bus.
Point of clarity, you're saying, you just said, you said a bus is $60,000 a year.
$60,000 a year to operate, maintain, put gas in.
I know, I understand. I don't need all that, Ms. Falk.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So it's $60,000 a year, but then you said it's $20,000 per student.
If you had three students complete the RFT, as an example, this was one of the locations that was looked at for a specific school.
So if three students, I just, if, I need to take it, you know, bit by bit.
That's okay.
So a yellow bus is 60 grand a year, 60,000, excuse me.
Right.
And then if only three kids ride that bus, then it goes from-
It's, it's that route.
60,000 plus 20,000?
No, no, no. It's that 60,000 to do, to Dr. Thompson's point, that route costs $20,000 a student. If I've got 10 students going and asking for that route, this is why impracticality is so important.
Just give me the numbers, Falk. I don't need to keep-
Yeah, so I'm just saying then it would be $6,000 a student.
So they're larger than number, then it decreases, is what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and this is for general ed. So then, but, but parents can, and this is why I'm saying this is a board meeting. Board, we have board meetings to vote something up or down. This is like, all this extra talking is information that should be happening in committees and outside of a board meeting. And so when we get to asking all these questions, this is nothing against you, Ms. Falk, this is when I say, well, this needs to get not voted on today because it's too many questions and I don't want the pressure to vote on something that then impacts however many students, right? And it's not very clear, even though it may be clear to you all who are doing this or working in transportation every day, it needs to be clear to the seven elected persons. So when we speak into the community member that put us in a seat, that we know what's going on. And I, I'm not confident in the clarity and the extra words are not helping me. Like, the extra words are doing nothing for me in that area. And so for me, I, I wouldn't be voting with a clear conscience of yes on this, just, just, so I'm one person though, because I need more certainty. Because my next question is, if parents are charged with transporting these same said kids, whatever school they're going to, the choice that they're making, if it's 150 kids, if it's 200 kids, whatever the number, and it's 500 per child, if the parents are unable to transport their kids, what does that mean? And if a parent can transport, even though we only could use yellow bus, then what's the difference if the ICOs can have expedition that can fit nine kids and they could transport nine kids and it's not gonna be 60,000 for them? So I wonder, is there, now this is just all conversation because the still made students are getting transport, if a parent can transport them in their own vehicle and get this small, this stipend that the parent's gonna get, if there was a unit that can transport them in a group, what would that look like? Now, I say all that not for a response from you, Ms. Falk, or from you, Ms. Carter, but just to say, these are my questions and this is why I'm saying, I don't believe I'm ready to vote on those two that's been removed today. And I'm concerned when I hear Member Hall say that parents were just made aware that their kids won't be get transported in two weeks. This is all new information, a process. That's the only reason I want to be clear to the community, to you all. The only reason I would, I have a no vote if it's something against my true convictions and the convictions that I believe the people will put me in a seat and if I don't know what the heck, if I'm not sure.
I do, I do want to say one statement. The RFT process is, we can, some parents may not have known the final determination. It depends on when we received the RFT request for the transport, was able to go through the process to determine exactly what was eligible and then was there a route available and not a route. And some parents are very, very good, as I said, we opened this process up in April, but we did not get some of these items from the parents until the 1st of August. So it depends on when you get the RFT from the parent is to help the process. Thank you.
I'm running a meeting. Okay, all right. Discussion has been happened. Roll call, Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Hall.
We need to-
They're both the same, 22.1 and 20, 25.1.
We'd vote on them separately.
Yeah, okay, so-
We need a motion.
Okay, I make the motion, or someone, I know, someone make the motion to, excuse me. We need, is there a motion to approve item 22.1 from the, that's been removed off the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve item 22.1?
I move to approve 22.1.
Is there a second? They're being separate, the 22.1 and 25, 20?
What you're doing right now is voting to approve or not approve 22.1, which is contracts with parents for transporting their children to or from school 24, 25 school year. So you're voting up or down or abstain?
And we're just doing the resolution and it's separate. So is there a motion to approve?
I move.
22.1?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Without a second, it dies on the table.
So without a second, it dies. All right, now.
And we have 25.
25.1.
But you can't approve 25.1 without 22.1. So 25.1 is essentially dead on the table.
Dead on arrival as well, for the record.
And now we're to 26.1 with the exception of 22.1 and 25.1.
Thank you. So now with that, with the removal of 22.1 and 25.1, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Seconded by Member Sykes, moved by Member Perry.
Madam Chair, I think they were going to do 27.9. They had a, that's part of the consent agenda too, right?
That's not part of the consent.
Oh.
Okay, okay.
So we're just up to 26.1.
And just for the sake of order, please wait to be recognized by the chair so that we can move the meeting along in order, okay? All right.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Th, Dr. Thompson, please.
Ms. Jackson.
No.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Monarch.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
You want to say yes?
See, that's what threw me off too, all these numbers and all these different things.
Okay, so-
So we're just approving consent agenda 26, right?
You're approving the consent agenda in 26.1, but you're removing, because they're already dead on arrival, 22.1 and 25.1.
So we're approving 23 and 24?
That's correct.
And 26?
That, that's correct.
Okay, yes.
And you would like to amend yours?
Yes, I need to amend mine, please.
Okay.
To a yes for the approval of the consent agenda. I'm missing this deal with the dead on arrival.
Motion carries, thankfully. 5-0.
Okay, thank you all for your patience and thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next is our Business Affairs recommendations. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President, Vice President Jackson. Before, before I recommend the approval, I just wanted to, Ms. Yvonne Culver, to come and just shed a little light, very, very brief, just a couple of seconds, on one of the strategies that support social emotional learning. As we look at cornerstone one, building a culture of safety and belonging, this is an opportunity for our scholars and I just wanted her to shed a little light on it just in case anyone would have questions regarding it.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Robinson, Superintendent. Can you put a two-minute timer? I will be brief, further than that. But it does bring me honored to be able to share about how APS is responsive and how we are also leaders in the state. So APS was able to be the first district to be recognized as a teen mental health first aid district. This work started several years ago when we brought out youth mental health first aid. So youth mental health first aid is the component in which adults are trained to support the youth. But in response to youth requests to be able to support their peers, we brought in teen mental health first aid, which teaches students how to promote and how to support their peers during mental health challenges. We run this through the health classes. We trained our health instructors for sustainability as well as several staff members on the district level so that in the event a health teacher is unavailable, one of us is able to move in and those students at every school will still get that training. So we are proud, once again, to be recognized as one of the first districts, the first district in Ohio to offer teen mental health first aid.
This is great. Thank you so much. Especially for those who've been following for the last few years. I know since I've been on here, you had teachers come, you had parents come, you had students come. And one of the main themes that resonated through all groups, all backgrounds, was mental health and the need for something like that. So I love it. Thank you. Kudos to all of you who worked on that. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. I'd like to wish, recommend the approval of Business Affairs recommendations presented in category 27, please.
Is there a motion to approve the business?
Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs recommendation, category 27? I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs recommendations in categories 28.1? Mr. Perry?
I'm sorry, so we're approving 28.1 or 27?
Around 27.
Yeah, 27, right?
Yes, it's 27. It starts 27.
I'm sorry, 27, thank you.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I will second so we can have some discussion on section 27.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Monarch. All right, it's been moved by Member Perry, seconded by Member Monarch. Is there any discussions? Yes. Okay, Member Perry, you've been recognized after Member Perry. Monarch, you've been recognized.
Thank you. So I'd like to know if 27.9 is what we were talking about earlier with the one student for the mental health going to the school for the blind in Columbus? Is that what this is about?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, I'm sorry that I had it come. I thought we were on that part, but, yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a particular transportation situation.
So what Ms. Culver just spoke about, this is that?
No, no, that-
This is not that, okay.
What Ms. Culver spoke about was around teen mental health.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that piece.
Sure.
But this is about transportation, but for specialized, special education students.
Okay.
So, good evening, members of the board. The Ohio State School for the Blind and School for the Deaf is in Columbus, Ohio. Students can have provisions of their services through their IEP provided at the Ohio State School for the Deaf or the Blind. It is a campus school, so we are mandated to get the students to school by Sunday. They have arrival, they have check-in time on Sundays, and then they're returned back to their home at the end of the day on Friday. So students travel on Sunday, stay on campus the entire week to receive the provision of their services through their IEP, and then they return home on Friday for a Saturday, and then they return to the school on Sunday. And the transportation does provide making sure that any type of equipment that they need, as well as they stay there for the week. So they're traveling back and forth with all of their items as well to make sure that they get there and they can take, take up for the week. So that's, that's the, the transportation that's needed to deliver the student to school and then back to Akron.
This cannot be done then through ICOs or van drivers? This is a particular company that we need to do this?
So we have specific transportation to and from the Ohio State School for the Deaf and the blind for students as well as like their equipment, things like that. So I, I'm not sure if the ICOs would be able to provide that, but we know that Suburban does and they take them on Sunday outside of school hours and then also Friday outside of school hours to Columbus.
So to clarify, from what I'm hearing, it's $14,000 to take students from Akron to Columbus for a week. And I know ICOs have transported a lot of our students with IEPs, have our ICOs transported any blind or deaf students?
Not to the Columbus school, not to this extent, no. But yes, they have transported, of course, deaf and blind students.
Were they, I know in a previous board meeting, we went through a process that the ICOs would be asked first and then the, another company that we went through. So was that process followed for this contract?
So as soon as the student's IEP is to be implemented at Ohio State School for the Deaf or the Blind, we have to immediately serve the provision of that IEP. We're mandated to provide specially designed instruction. Part of that is the transportation. We need to begin that immediately. It's not something that we have the time for. We are legally mandated to provide services and that is the implementation of those services to Ohio State School for the Deaf or Blind.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of this committee. We voted, when we vote, I expect it not to be taken lightly. So when we voted and indicated that the independent contractor would be considered first and then the second contractor would be considered second, then I expect this to be followed. So the answer is, we didn't have time, but yet we knew that this student was there in need when we voted on this particular item. And you may not have time, but you don't have my vote. And that's the difference here. Now, you can cite the law, the rules and regulations, but there's also laws, rules and regulations that govern this body that we voted on. And, and Mr. Superintendent, I'm actually talking to you, not her, is that I, as a board member, just expect, expect that you will do your very best to make sure that you are following the resolutions that we pass here. And if you cannot do that, then I would expect a courtesy. Don't expect me to call you. As your message says here, if I- As your message says here, if I have a question, don't expect me to call you. I expect you to call me to say, this is the reason why we can't do that. Because this is serious. When we pass resolutions here, this is our law. And I believe that it is being totally disregarded because you didn't have the time. So what am I to say to the people that vote for me? If I stand there and say that when we vote for something, that I understand it is my responsibility to make sure that this takes place, unless you don't have the time to do it, where does that leave me? They don't trust me. That's the reason why we're having problems with what's happening here. That we're still dealing with the transportation issue as it relates to the legislation that we passed, dealing with the independent contractors and that second vendor. So at least give us the courtesy and the respect to say, we've looked at all options, we've done this, there's no way we can do it. But don't just send this to us and say, if you got a question, give us a call. I'm not saying that to my constituents. That is not how I roll with my constituents. I'm saying, if you, if I say I'm going to do something, then I am going to do it, because that's why they voted for me. So you see the position that you all put us in? You put us in this position that we have to sit here and not give you a second on something. Of course we want this child to go back and forth. Of course we want this child to do that. Of course we understand the severity of this. Of course we understand how difficult transportation is. We understand that. But understand us and what you are doing and what you are doing to us. When we say we are voting for this and this is what we expect you to tell us. And if there is a reason why, if there is an exception, then please let us know. And no, I'm not going to call and ask you. I'm not going to call and ask you, because I have the vote. And we also control the pocketbook. We control the money, in case you don't know that too. We have the vote, we have the money, and we have the people expecting us as elected officials to this board to do what we say we are going to do. So courtesy, please, respect, please, understand the situation that we are in here. So the question is, as Dr. Molnar asked, did you find out if the independent contractors could not drive this young person to and from Columbus? And it's okay, if they drove a, a blind child from home to Forestown, from home to Bookton, the road also leads to Columbus. It's the same, it's, it's, I think they can still drive there too. It's the same, it's the same process. You know, you, you can't run over anybody, you got to stop at red lights, you got to go at green lights, you got to turn where you say. It's the same driving. So that is the question. And if you have not done that, then the answer is you didn't have the time. It's not acceptable.
Yes, to, to my knowledge, Ms. Sykes and to the board, this particular student has special equipment, which I asked that question before this even came on the board docket. So, and then given also that, on the Friday, I think it is, whomever would have that route, if they were, if they were even able to do it, would already have an additional route, would already have a route for their normal route. So that would have to move to someone else so that they are able to actually pick up this child and bring, but they would have to also be able to be equipped to handle the equipment that goes with the child to the, to the, to the school. So I asked that question before this, when this was brought. Because it's actually, I think, a renewal.
Because he goes from Sunday though, right?
Correct.
But I'm talking about on Friday.
Yes, correct.
When they go to pick him up.
On Friday, oh.
And then Friday.
And they have to be picked up by a certain time.
Mm-hmm, yes. They have a schedule that we have to follow. And then also for early release, holidays, things like that as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was on call for the question. I feel like we discussed it and people we can know to vote it down or, but, no, I want to recognize you, Member Hall, go ahead.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question was, when does school start for this child? Or has it already started? And then two, I know we keep talking about equipment. What type of equipment does this child need? Oh, yeah. You didn't see me, I was over here doing this. You don't have to break it down far as, well, never mind, I'll let you answer a question.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I want to also make sure that we're recognizing FERPA whenever we are talking about a specific student. But in general, equipment that goes would be CCTV, a jaw machine for brailing for the student back and forth. It would be the equipment for deaf students as far as any type of hearing aids, cochlear, things like that. The stick, the cane that students use whenever they're blind, as well as any other equipment that's specific to students.
And the other question was, when does school start or has school already started for this child?
School has started. The student enrolled after school started and then was accepted. So as soon as that student was accepted in school, we have to implement the IEP and provide those provision of services immediately, so.
So have we been implementing the services for the student already?
He has been going to Ohio State School for the Blind as soon as he was accepted, yes.
Okay, and how has he been getting there? He or she, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How, how have they been getting to Columbus?
They have.
I mean, this is just on our agenda today, but if they've already started, how have, who's been transporting them back and forth?
We have been transporting through Suburban.
So Suburban has already been doing the work?
Yes. Because they immediately had to pick up and take the student to Ohio State School for the Deaf or the Blind.
Okay, just one follow-up, I'm sorry. So at our last board meeting, we didn't know about the student applying? Or it was all brand new, they just applied during this, I mean, in August?
At the, at the end of August, yes. The student had applied and accepted and decided that that's where they wanted to go.
Okay, so I guess I'm wondering why we're voting on it if it's already been implemented? Okay, thank you.
One, one second, because, Member Hall, I don't, I didn't hear your question answered because I felt like you asked, where was he, was he going to somewhere before? Because as I understood, what I heard you say is if he was just, the student, he or she was just accepted to the School of the Blind.
Yes.
In Columbus.
Yes.
And previously, the school location, was it in Akron? Were they getting schooled in Akron previously?
There had been various schools where the.
Locally though.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And they were being locally transported by the same company that's transporting them to Columbus?
No, they were not. This is specific to Ohio State School for the Blind or Deaf.
Oh, as their transporta- the transportation that they use?
Correct.
Okay, so we switched. So I think, if I just made a point, I think we have enough information to, to call for the vo- for me. I think, because it's clear, as Member Sykes said, we passed resolutions and people, it's just, you know, do what they feel. Because it almost seems as though the role of a board member is not just per functionary. And so that there is business that the board must do and things the board must approve. And I think not to belabor this point and not to turn this meeting into something else, I personally, I want to call for, I want to call the question so that we can move forward from this and then this will have to, we have to deal with this at a different time. The student has already been, being transported. And how the student has been transported, I think is what's been called to question because of resolution that went forward from this board. The, the same student was transported within our district, we understand, or around locally previously. And so it goes to the same question that we all keep saying. And I think we're spending, as Pastor Harrison said, so much time on transportation and talking about these adults about working in their jobs. I'm, I'm personally tired of, but we need to do, have integrity and do what said is going to do and make sure our students are in a position that they need to be in to thrive. It's very simple for me, because as we all say, it's about the kids. So I want to get to the business about kids. We're talking about eye ready tests, I'm worried about classrooms.
Call the vote.
Yes, call for the vote. I'm with it, I'm, sorry. Yes, Member Sykes, let's call for the vote, call for the vote.
So we've already had approval, Mr. Perry, Dr. Molnar. So now we're taking roll call. And again, this is for 28.1 approval of Business Affairs Recommendations, which includes the Suburban Transportation. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes, on all except 27.9, no.
Dr. Molnar.
No, on 27.9, yes, on the balance.
Ms. Hall.
Ditto, no, no on 27.9, yes on the balance.
Ms. Jackson.
No on 27.9, yes on the balance.
So 27.9 failed, one to four. The rest, the balance is approved, 5-0.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Member Sykes.
Madam Chair, hearing that the system has already started with the transportation without the approval of this board, I would ask that they explain how they plan on paying for this.
Thank you. So when I asked about this, because of the special conditions that the student has, again, this is something that I think has been done in the past. But I did understand for all other transportation that our ICOs, which I've made clear, would be chosen first. But this, this particular situation wasn't on the table when I, I think when we looked at this. So I really don't know in terms of how we will have to pay for it, because it's paid out of IDA funds. No, it's not general, this is specific to the special aid student.
Okay, now the other question, have we entered, have we entered a signed contract with those, with the transportation of this learner? Have we entered a contract already with the, the current transportation of this learner? Suburban? You're correct.
So we do have a transportation agreement in place with the, with Suburban to get the student to and from Ohio State School for the Deaf or Blind.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, I just, for clarification, thank you.
And then just to confirm and reiterate, it is paid for through our IDA Part B dollars.
Okay. And thank you for that clarification as well.
Madam Chair.
Member Hall.
So quick question. So this would have gone through Business Affairs, this agreement, right? And with that being said, did it go through the committee that we have in place to look at all the different contracts and agreements? Okay.
Maybe something. Okay. That was 27 through 27. Oh, we're on 30, thank you. There is, is there any new business? I'm not showing that there's any new business. Is there any unfinished business? I'm not showing, there's no unfinished business. And so now we're moving on to new business, which is the resolution supporting Dr. Robinson. Is there a motion to approve the resolution supporting Dr. Robinson?
I don't, is it in board docs?
I'm reading from what I have here, notice. I think that's what the, the letter that I read earlier today. So there is no resolution there, so you can disregard that. So I guess there is no, I'm not, there is no resolution, please disregard. 31, Executive Session. There is a need to go into Executive Session pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code 121.22G. Number three, for the purpose of conferencing with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. Is there a motion to go into Executive Session?
I, I still move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes. Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. We recess at 7:49.
Okay, we recess at 7:49 into Executive Session. There shouldn't be any action upon returning.